All right, I have four thirty. Let's call the meeting to order. And you can call the roll.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey is in Florida.
Eddie? John, can you give us a prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, we ask you for wisdom as we consider these matters before us tonight. In Christ's name, amen.
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 Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people for which it stands. On the nation under God, in this whole with liberty and justice for all.
Foreign and unborn. All right. Anyone have any additions to the agenda? And I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
To move. Or.
Motion by Commissioner Lumberman, support by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Anyone wish to address the commission? Anyone online that would like to address the commission? Unmute yourself and. Do we see any possibilities?
I don't see anybody connected in to make public.
Okay, great. Alrighty. Okay. And we're looking for the consent calendar. Anyone like to pull anything out? Looking for a motion on that?
Move the consent calendar.
Motion by Commissioner Lumberman, we have a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. So. Up to the. Administrators' reports up next.
Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder to you, when you come in, you might want to occasionally check your mailbox in the admin office. Nothing too interesting there, anything of value, certainly anything with money in it, I've already taken it. That was a joke, but you might just check that now and then. Let me talk to you a little bit about opioid funds. As you know, we're involved in or joined many, many other villages, townships, cities, states, counties in disputing the manufacturing distribution of opioid medications over a period of time. There has been an additional delay. Well, I think I had mentioned that there has been a settlement with Johnson and Johnson, McKesson, Amerisource, Bergen, and Cardinal Health. There's been a delay in our receiving the first payment in those settlements. The payments had initially been expected in April and August two this year. Then they were expected in July, and now frankly, we don't, we just don't know. Still expected this calendar year, though. In September, however, the payment portal was opened up for us to register, get ourselves signed up, and we did take care of that mid-month. So we've gotten ourselves connected, now we just sit and wait. As previously mentioned, and just offer a little bit of an update and reminder to you, the state of Michigan is to receive approximately eight hundred million dollars. Half of that will be distributed to county and local governments. Of the half, which is four hundred million, five percent of the the local share, or two million, is going to go into what is called a special circumstances fund. So for example, if a county thinks that it has the calculations are not correct in the funds that it is to create or to receive, and that is proven to be true, additional funds would be taken out of this special circumstances fund. Now, a formula was used to determine the allocations for each county, city, township, local entity. Grashit is calculated to receive a number that extends three, six, nine, ten digits to the right of the decimal point. That is point three, five, two, five, one, seven, one, zero, five, eight percent, which I'm carrying rounding, 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 it's point three, five percent of the three hundred ninety-eight million. That comes to approximately just over one hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. The Attorney General's Office has cautioned us, all these are very, very conservative numbers, they are estimates, they are preliminary, so just trying to give you what we have for now. The payments by way of reminder will be made over an eighteen-year period. Eighteen-year periods. They're going to be front-loaded, so the amounts I've given you more upfront later as we trail off. And once we see some of this, and again, I've indicated there have been delays, once we see some of this, and we have an idea of what the numbers really are going to be, I'll come back and talk to you about the sorts of things that the the guidance that we've been given tells us, ways we can spend this or distribute that. So that's opioid funds, we're we've got our eyes open looking for the the first payment on the class comp study, that's moving forward. There's lots of things going on right now that you don't see. Sheila's been very involved in doing lots of data entry. Unfortunately, all the employee information that's loaded into the BSNA system can't just be imported into our vendor system, so there's been lots and lots and lots of data entry. She has scheduled briefing sessions, the vendor with the various departments, but Sheila's going to be here at the next meeting and provide you more of an update on that project. Finally, capital projects. You're not here during the day, so you don't hear it so much, but we've got some sanding and grinding and blasting that's going on outside our windows, and that is the courthouse facade repair project, and we held off on this for about four years. And it's been concerning me because it's been eroding in the lower areas, probably due to the salt that we spread in very generous quantities over the course of the winter to make sure those surfaces are safe for for the public. But there's also a whole bunch of tuck pointing that has needed to be caught up on. So given the importance of this for our community, this has been a very high priority for me, and ARP funds have helped us finally to get this done. The Q six crew's been out there grinding away, he's getting things back in shape, so our list of other projects along with day-to-day repairs is just kind of chugging along, so that's what I've selected for the administrators' report or update this week.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, next, we're moving on to Commissioner's report. John, you have anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Most everything I have is the airport, but I do want to just mention that Arcata Township has a street that is Elma adjacent, and a gentleman put up a pole building after checking with the township on, you know, what the setbacks needed to be and everything. But it turns out that this particular street is governed by some covenant from nineteen fifty-eight that has its own setbacks, and it's different than what the township told him, so now he's this covenant is supposed to have a board, a chairman of the board, its own officers, there's nobody, you know, it's from nineteen fifty-eight, there's nobody that that can be found. But apparently, it's still the governing instrument, so he's going to come before the planning commission and see if he can get the other requirements waived and go through the you know, what the township recommended. It was just something new to me, I had never heard of that before. Tuesday last week was the Elma meeting, and they spent a half hour in discussion of the airport at that meeting. The discussion made me feel like we're not going to see any resolution of anything this week or this year because I believe they're going to go down the rabbit hole of basically what our airport committee did of investigating everything, trying to find out costs. They seem to think we have some rabbit that we're going to pull out of our hat to make the airport work. One of them said that he should go over all of the minutes of our meetings to see what we would be doing with the airport. So it just seemed like sort of a suspicious thing, but Eric at that meeting, and then Eric again at the Arcata Township meeting, which he attended, and I'm surprised he's not here tonight. He was pretty steadfast both times, and at the Airport Authority meeting on Thursday, that maybe the township, or maybe the county can do it for twenty thousand a year, maybe we can work to that point where we can get it done for twenty thousand a year, the city cannot. But I'm not I don't think anything's going to happen fast. I think they're going to need to see the election and see who the new people are and decide from there. I asked Chris to help me out, and I want to show you a couple of pages from the Airport Authority meeting. Chris, if you would scroll that up a little bit? Okay, so we had an emergency meeting on July thirteenth, and that emergency meeting was because right at first, we didn't get any bids for the fuel farm, and the engineer suggested we leave it open for another couple of weeks. We finally got one bid. And item three on there, you can see what the the bid is, it's eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-six dollars. And that is the cost for the fuel farm, and we approved that. There's about twenty thousand of that is engineer expense, the rest is the other eight hundred and four thousand. That is the cost to put it in. And you can see the on item three, the fourth line down, the local share of that is only about twenty-three thousand. That locally, there's about twenty-three thousand that has to come up out of local pockets to make that work. So I just wanted to show you that that is moving forward, it's moving forward no matter what. And then number four there on the agenda, review a request from Steve Minehart for space on airport property for the construction of a seventy-by-eighty-eight-foot private hangar. Chris, could you go to the last page? Okay, so you can see up at the top, Seaman Road, and you can see where you drive into the airport. His proposed hangar, Steve, that Steve Minehart, is that yellow box. It's the box that's yellow with the red squares in, or the the red diagonal lines. That hangar has not been created yet, but that's where he's proposing to put that spot. And the reason, the main reason I wanted to tell you guys about that was Eric did not want this to come to a vote, and he did not want a motion because he felt that the Airport Authority probably is not going to exist very much longer, and so if the Airport Authority was going to give Steve Minehart permission to put that hangar in, perhaps whatever entity would come after would say, whoa, wait a minute, we're not good with that, and I'm not really sure why he did that, but at any, at any rate, all we're doing is, all we, the Airport Authority, is doing is telling this guy, go ahead with your architect plans, but we did not give him a motion to stand on. So I I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what's going on with the airport, because I'm only only going to be here for a few meetings, so it would be somebody else's deal. That's all I got.
Thank you, John.
Briefly, if they can't make a decision on putting this guy jet in there, you just think, how are they going to decide on whether they're going to take it or not?
Right.
I mean, they were going home and they left our meeting, and they they really believe that we've struck gold there, or something, where we're going to pump oil, or they just believe that we've got some plan that she's going to be Las Vegas or something tomorrow, I don't know what's the thinking, but you know, I'm still in the opinion, let them have it, but if they can't make a decision on putting a jet out there, you know, and this is a great start, I would think. Have somebody come in and want to build that.
Right.
You know, and how will we ever get them to make a decision? How will we get them to make a decision to? I mean, we can't even give them timelines, or wait, maybe we need to figure out this way we can just get out. You know, and and like Arcata and the other guys want, you know, hey, just leave it to us, you know?
Jamie Khan said that they were going to lock Eric and I in a room on Thanksgiving, and no turkey, no football until we.
Bottom line is, I think you're locking the wrong guy in.
Yeah, yeah.
You got to grab the mayor. Eric can see the trees and he sees the forest. I don't just see the trees.
And you're right. There's probably going to be quite a turnover on that board up there, so.
Yeah, so I think it's probably paralyzed.
What they, their view of it, I would assume, a new board.
I guess I tell you, if I was going to, and I don't know anything about flying, I've said that a lot of times, but if I was going to put a jet, if I owned a jet and I was going to put it in there, and they decided, said to me, go ahead and get the architectural drawings, but we'll kind of figure out who's going to run it down the road.
Not positively, not positive, it's a jet, but it's a two-plane hangar.
Yeah.
It is a, it is a two.
But if you were going to put that big operation in there, I don't know if I could go spend twenty, thirty thousand dollars on drawings just for that facility, because you couldn't take those drawings and say, I want to do this in the field. And it's going to be drawn for that facility.
All right.
For me.
I don't have anything, just been busy on the campaign, looks like it's going to be a good year, and it's looking better every day. Jan?
I've been kind of busy, I made a lot of copies and delivered them to all my townships of our budget, they're happy to get that. And also, I made a copy of the drain commission, I've got a, when we get to that, I'll tell you more about it. I had someone call me, actually, I work with his wife when I work at Carrionell in in St. Louis, and she, her and her husband have got a problem with the with the drain commission, so I'll go over that then, but other than that, I have a lot of meetings coming up, though. This next, the next month, November, and the end of this month, so I'll be all around the state.
There was a Fulton Township last night, they they appointed a guy, Doug Gannus, about two months ago. He was the village mayor of Perryton, I believe. Sharp guy to be the superintendent or supervisor. After meeting last night, he just resigned. You know, I think Fulton's I think they're going to be struggling there, so. Another thing we're doing, we're still working on, I'm still working on this Verizon tower down. We have this new tower, south side of Grashit County, south of Rainbow Lake, it affects Maple Rapids in the northern Clinton, or the southern, northern Clinton County, southern Grashit County for our police, our fire, their police and fire ambulance and stuff like that. Met with some people through some friends of mine, who, this Matt Nixon from Verizon, to make a recommendation to have Verizon be the first one to hang something on that tower, to get a repeater system up there. Probably got about twenty-five letters of support from different entities in both counties. And so we've sent them on to them, still sent, I sent three more today. We're down to like Fulton Schools, you know, they have a bus down there, and breaks down, their communication doesn't work, if they have Verizon phones, they don't work. So I think we have a good shot at getting that done. They're going to make a decision in a few weeks, so I'll know more about it. Other than that, not much.
So Sam, did you, when you and I were talking, did you say that you included some politicians in this as well?
Yeah, um, yeah, Graham Filler, he sent a letter, I was a letterhead. Tell me his name here. Senator Asterman, no, that's Chris Asterman. What's? Outman, yeah. He sent a letter of support. We got MMR, we got Fulton Schools, we got the both sheriffs in both counties, Clinton area ambulance, both, all the fire departments, road commission guys, Township of Fulton, they have sewer guys working down there, the sewer ponds are down there. That's something else they did just do, I don't know if you've seen that, Chris, yet. They didn't purchase that ground down there, Fulton got that fourteen or seventeen acres there, expand their sewer system. So we have a number of groups of people that have supported this.
So Matt Hewitt, if you could unmute for a second? I, I just wanted to bring this to your attention because I I thought of the broadband committee immediately when Sam was talking about the networking and the letter writing and stuff like that, getting the politicians and the schools involved. Because don't we need to do that same kind of thing for those grants that's coming out in the spring?
Yeah. Some of the grants, it's the ISPs that apply for the grants, and then different members of the community or different municipalities, and then county would write letters so that the ISPs can submit those letters along with their grant application, is my understanding.
Okay, I I just wanted to make sure you're aware that Sam's.
We've got the emails and stuff.
Yeah, he's got the the that that network already built to some extent.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Alrighty, then let's move on. New business, Keegan, looks like you're up.
All right, so what I've got today is the two thousand twenty-two apportionment report. This report is a complete summary of the taxable value, millage rates, and special assessments levied within each township and city in Grashit County. And the responsibility of the board is to approve the certification and spread of these millages upon the taxable value across across the county. So I guess before I get into the report, I just wanted to give a really brief kind of overview of what all goes into making the apportionment report. This report really starts in March of each year, when the assessment rolls are turned in. When we get the finalized assessment rolls from the assessors of the county, we will take the values and put them into a form called the Millage Reduction Fraction Computation Form, or the L forty twenty-eight. Basically, this form is looking at each taxable value from each township and determining whether or not basically what it boils down to, if that their taxable value is growing more than the rate of inflation. If it is growing more than the rate of inflation, then they get their millage reduction fraction. That's what Grashit County got this year on their forty twenty-nine, which caused our millage rates to go down a little bit. So once all those millage reduction fractions are complete, they are sent out to all of the townships and cities in the county, and they use that form to complete their tax rate request, which is the L forty twenty-nine, which lists all the millages they would like to levy in their township. They take each of those forms, send them in to us at the equalization department, and we basically compile them all into the apportionment. So the first part of the report is, and I apologize about the small writing, it's just hard to fit all of this information in one page there, but basically what you're seeing is the, on the left-hand side of the report is the county at the top, and then the townships and cities at the second part there, going across is the taxable value, millage rates that they'll be levying, and then the estimated tax dollars of what those villages will levy. So allocated rates are the first millage that going across from left to right, then it gives the estimate of tax dollars, and then it gives the extra voted millages, and then the estimated tax dollars. And then on the right-hand side, you can see the total of the estimated tax dollars from both the operated and allocated millages and the voted millages. Does anybody have any questions on that page of the form? I believe our total estimated tax dollars is just slightly higher than last year, so it's pretty similar. I believe it was only a hundred, two hundred thousand, or something like that, more. Also, the second page of the report, this is listing the taxing authorities in Grashit County, and there are two new authorities this year, the Grashit Emergency Services Authority and the Ashley Area Fire Authority, and they are both levying one point five mils. Moving on from there, this is especially small writing, this is all of the school districts in Grashit County, and what they'll be levying, and basically the same as the other pages, it lists their taxable value for the school district, the millages that they're requesting the levy, and what those mills will levy out to in tax dollars.
Just real quick, and the schools, the sinking fund, is that a millage that's voted in? I mean, do they vote that in? How does that separate it out? I guess I'm just looking at that, what the school gets. I believe it's going to a special fund or something, right?
Yeah, I believe the I don't have a lot of experience with the sinking fund millages, but I believe they're related to the debt millages for, that each of the schools have.
I see.
So basically, if they're completing some sort of project, they have a certain amount of debt that they have to cover, and that's what they levy.
Taking a millage out of whatever for that debt or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that's what that is, and I can do a little digging to make sure that.
Spray it out, and I knew it had to be voted on somehow.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I believe that's what it is, yeah.
Running debt they're taking out besides operating.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The next page covers the Community College and the intermediate school districts. Then moving past that, the page that lists all of these school districts and their homestead and non-homestead rate, this is a this page we will post on the website under the equalization page, that way any taxpayers can go on there, they can look at their school district, they can determine whether or not they're located in the homestead or the non-homestead rate, and then they can figure out their, estimate their taxes for the year. The final page is just the special assessments that are levied in Grashit County. And then the final page is just the certification statement. Does anybody have any questions overall on what's going into the apportionment report?
This is turned into the state.
Yes, yep.
Remotion state.
Yep.
Need a motion on this?
Ah, yes, yep.
I will support this, accept this.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Keegan, have a good night.
That paper aside. Next, Bernie, you're zooming in, I think, there you are.
Yes, hello, Mr. Chairman and the Board of Commissioners. I'm here to offer my annual report for the year of the twenty-one, twenty-two tax year. Rather than go through all two hundred pages, I guess it sounds like Jan maybe has some pre-questions. I can kind of give you an overview. If you compare it to last year, we're we're down in all categories on pretty much everything. In all categories on pretty much everything, we've done less petitions, about a million dollars less in petitions this year. We've done less maintenance, um, so it causes everything to be down all the way across the board with, uh, materials and everything. Construction contracts, et cetera. And I guess if there's any questions on it, I can, um, answer them at this time.
Bernie, I do have some questions, actually I'm presenting, um, surprise, uh, it'd be the, um, I gotta tell you what, the assessor, it would be the, um, number forty in Pine River Township. And, um, I'm trying to think what you call that.
Anyway, it's. My annual report, correct? This is for topping champ?
Yeah, it's, uh, it'll be, it would be, um, Project Forty. And it has, it's Doug and Connie Harley, is it?
Correct, yep, on the corner of, uh, Eldshire up there in Jefferson, right?
Yes, they, they said they've tried to call you, um, and would like you to get back a hold of them. And would like to talk to you about it, but apparently he paid to, um, have tile put in and some other tile brushed. And it was supposed to be connected up to the new tile, but it, but it wasn't. And then also they've got a area two where it's, um, like, the ground is sinking in. And, um, I've got him on tape, I can, I'd be glad to play that for everybody. Uh, but anyway, they've had two, um, two trucks full, you know, the big dumpster dump trucks that they bring in. To fill this hole. And they said that, and it's caused because of the drains and stuff.
Yeah, that's like, that was from like ten years ago, right, Jan? What you're talking about there? That's why we're doing this project, he's actually the petitioner on it. And I think what you're caught up in is we're still under construction on that project. We ran into, we have large amounts of sewage coming into that.
Yeah, he told me about that.
We haven't done the final connections yet. Um, where, what we're gonna do is, once we get the, the new pipe. There's a thirty-six inch new pipe that's all the way up to Eldra Road now, and that's just sitting there right now because of the sewage issue we got going. And, uh, and, you know, the health department's researching that, and the house across the road isn't, you know, the problem. So now we're looking all the way up into first hole and trying to locate problem. Um, and then, once we hook up the new tile, then we're gonna review thirty-inch concrete that's next. And this is the one that, you know, they're concerned. We don't want to just go spoon crack that thirty-inch time because that is quite durable structure. And so last week proved their problems and it was as it was undersized. So, to take. That.
We lost, we got an action problem. Right?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that Bernie maybe shuts off his video, it might free up some bandwidth so that he can, um, reconnect in and just do audio and have that be a little bit more clear.
Okay, yeah. So you're, you're working on that?
It, it looks like he dropped off, and I think he's gonna try to reconnect in now. Bernie, Bernie, I'm gonna recommend that we shut off your video just so that we can maybe hear you a little, little bit better. There we go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, great.
Okay, alright, um, I don't know where I lost you at, but yes, so we're gonna, you know, the engineer's gonna survey the existing pipe prior to crushing, because we don't wanna eliminate that if that's what we need. Does that answer your question, Jan?
Yes, well, what is, what is, the reason I'm involved in it is, again, I work with his wife when I go to carry now. Uh, schools, but, um, his concerns is that there's several other farmers that are wanting to connect into this pipe. That, that they petitioned to get in there, and then also there, he did tell me about the sewage problem from the, from the milk truck. And that, but the concern is that he does not want this to go by and nothing to be done with it, you know, nothing to be done at all. And still have the same problem, plus several of them have already paid upfront to have this, um, all this work done. And so is it, is it possible that you could call him tomorrow?
Sure, sure, Jan.
Do you want his phone number?
I have it, Jan. It, you know, I was hoping by this time we would have. The connection, we would have had all the connections done if we didn't encounter the sewage problem. And it hasn't been resolved yet, and it's a large discharge. So, that's what's put a stall on this project and I, you know, by all means, I wanna just get it done and over. But I'll call him tomorrow and, you know, I'll update it, but is until we can. Get everything connected, I really don't have answers for him yet.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the bottom, the thing I forgot to say, mention is that. When he, when he was down there, he goes to quite often to check on what's going on down there, the whole project. And, um, when they were starting to cover up the tile, he said, well, aren't you gonna crush the tile? And he goes, no, we're no longer gonna do that, that it was, it was no longer part of the project. And he said that that's the reason why they had the project was to crush this tile, the old tile, get rid of it because that old tile. Is causing the sinkhole. And so th- there is, the question is this, is that he is upfront paid to have something done. And the people that are there to do the work said, no, it's been taken off the sheet to have done, they're not to do it at all.
That's, that's not true, Jan.
Okay, yeah, that, that's why I thought you should get involved in this or be more about.
And I, well, yeah, I've talked to him many times and it's just. You know, it's too early in the stage to say exactly what the problem is, um, he speculated that the. Pop, the pipe was rotted in the bottom, we cannot find it, we camered it, we cannot find a problem with the pipe. What it was is there was a thirty-inch pipe there and it was undersized, so it was under pressure and it was blowing out. Now that we have a thirty-six inch pipe installed next to it, and then once we disconnect the thirty, there's really gonna be very little. Water going down that thirty-inch pipe, and we will only pull like eight inches. Of, from the thirty-six inch pipe into that one, and so really we're gaining a lot more capacity. And what my game's all about, when we get a six-inch rain, we wanna have enough pipe to take it. Where the thirty-six inch is gonna be based on a twenty-five-year storm event. And so, w- we can never have enough pipe in the ground, so if this is a serviceable pipe that we cannot find any defects. I do not wanna crush it, Jan, because there is no reason to. You know, the problem is it was undersized, there wasn't enough there, and if I crushed that and it was in perfect. Condition, it was just inadequate size because it was put in years ago. We're really going the wrong direction.
Okay, I think the other part is that if you're not gonna crush it, he needs to have, he's gonna, uh, want his money back. He said there's other farmers too that are gonna petition, oh, they're gonna go to an attorney unless you wanna just refund that money. So I'm just letting you know, um, I think, I think it should be between you and him and the farmers out there, I guess there's two or three other ones out there. And it should be between you and them, and, and I'm more than happy to bring it, I mean, I, he was gonna try to come today, but they called him into work. Uh, he's self-employed and he had to go and work this afternoon into the evening. Um, but, um, uh, he has tried to call you, why don't you call him tomorrow? And get ahold of him and see if you can't straighten it out between you and him and whoever else is involved in it.
Okay, yep, and I will, and I haven't heard from anybody else, so I don't know who else he'd be referring to. You know, it's just, uh, pretty much him, and he's got his mind made up that the milk truck's acid has ruined the pipe. But we cannot find it with any cameras, we cannot find any evidence of that. So, it's back to, unless I have evidence that there's failure, I don't wanna just start crushing pipe. You understand that, because we never have enough capacity to convey water when we get large rain events.
See, the pipe he's talking about is no longer gonna be used. The pipe that's, that he, he had a new pipe put in, and the old one is the one that he wants crushed, it's no longer gonna be, it's no longer operating.
Jan, you know, the easiest thing would be for me just to crush that pipe, but I'm trying to do the right thing here. You've gotta understand this, two's better than one, Jan.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, think about it, if, it, no matter what it is, if you have two glasses of water to drink for the day, it's better off two glasses than just one glass of water. Do you understand that?
Oh, yeah.
So I hate to dump one glass of water out thinking that, oh, I might not need it, okay? And it's the same thing here, if I need, I'm telling you that thirty-six inch pipe. At some point, we're gonna get enough rain, which would be about four inches of rain in one day. And that'll be full capacity and we will have flooding upstream. If I can find that this pipe is serviceable, then we will have twice as much conveyance of water. Across his field, I know he doesn't, isn't concerned with anybody upstream, everybody's only concerned with their own. You know, benefit here, but I gotta look out for the whole district, I cannot just look out for one person, okay? And if this one smaller pipe is not. Overpressured anymore, we will not have the problems. You will find all over this county, there is multiple pipes, and it's for a reason. Because two is better than one, you can convey more water, you can't go necessarily bigger because you don't have the cover on the pipe. Uh, it'd be sticking out of the ground, and actually, if you go across the road up there on Eldra Road, you'll find that that pipe is above the ground halfway. And there is a berm that goes all the way up to Jefferson Road right by twenty-seven, because we, the pipe is too big. To have cover, if that makes sense. So I cannot put a sixty-inch pipe across this field because I'd have to have a berm all the way across this field. Okay, so by having two smaller ones, it's, it'll convey more water, and then we can handle larger rain events. And I agree, this guy is squeaking and he's contacted you and he's got his mind made up, we just need to destroy that concrete pipe. But concrete pipe is a very, very good pipe, I mean, that is something that lasts forever to say. And if there is no problems, if the engineer and the contractor cannot find any problems with that pipe. The best thing for the district would be to leave that pipe so we have two pipes to convey water rather than just one. Does that make sense to you, Jan?
Well, I'm, it doesn't need to make sense to me.
Well, I'm trying to explain.
Yeah, Bernie, I'm just gonna leave it up between you and him, to get ahold of him.
Yeah, and that's what I asked you. Yeah.
Sounds like he's working on it, right? So, anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, if there's any questions I, you know, answer about the special assessment from twenty twenty-two or my annual report, um. I can go through it page by page, there's a couple hundred pages, if you'd like me to go through that much detail, but, uh. Um, like I say, you'll find if you compare it to last year's, we are lower, um. Pretty much all across the whole board. You'll find that the values are lower than they were in twenty twenty-one. If there's no other questions, I guess, um, Mr. Chairman, I ask that you have a motion to accept the twenty twenty-two special assessment and annual report from the drain.
Alrighty.
Like a motion that we accept it.
A motion by Bunting to accept your, the, uh, drain report, is there a second? Support by, uh, Commissioner Smith, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, posnay, motion passed. So, thank you, Bernie.
Yeah, thanks, Bernie.
Yep.
And next up, uh, Jim?
Fortunately, I only have a five-page. But you can go into all the detail you want, excuse me, this is our, uh, um, renewal of our contract between the Economic Development. Operation EDC and Greater Grace, and it's also approved through the, uh, county boards, such as yourselves, because you're the governing entity of the EDC. So, that's, this is basically the same contract, same agreement that we've used in the past with a couple changes. On page one of it, uh, there's one extra whereas for the, uh, August twenty, August second, twenty twenty-two, uh, millage passing. And then we, uh, on page two of it, or, yeah, page two of it, the extending the contract from January first, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And then under the consideration portion of it, we kind of slimmed that down because, uh, prior time, we'd have, well, the first year's based on point four or five. Did the calculation, this point, we've just left it open in there to say, as you can read it, the consideration. For the services is just based upon the levy that will be decided each year for it. Up to half of point five mils, which is what approved by the, uh, voters. This year it's point four or five, as it's been in the past, but that could change at times. And then, again, and talked about, um, the points are six-six, point six-seven, which is the two-thirds for Greater Grash. The balance of that third goes to MSU extension. That's it, any changes? Then, uh, upon, if you decide it can be approved, then we're, uh, going to have our, uh, board meeting this Friday for Greater Grash Development, which would approve it. And then the EDC is planning on meeting Monday along with the Brownfield Authority for another, uh, project that we're looking at with that. And we can approve it at that, or not. Who for approval?
Second up.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bunting, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, posnay, motion passed. Wow, and, uh, you doing the Brownfield also then?
I do it while I'm up here.
Yep.
Okay with you. Um, we have three positions that we need to update on, and one is Chuck Sealy, the, uh, village president. In, uh, Breckenridge, his term needs to be re-upped. Uh, Brett Poblits is now the mayor with the unfortunate passing of Alice Schaefer. And, uh, so we need to have Brent appointed of it, and then Tom Reed took over, uh, at the end of the year for, uh, retirement of Jim Kelly. Who retired as, uh, mayor in the same Louis. So, we have those three, we had posted before for somebody, I think we had zero. Request, nobody was really wanting to get on EDC, we did a little, uh, uh, recruiting, and Sarah Bonacci, who is the new, uh, chairman, uh, or excuse me, the new president of the Grash Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, agreed to do it. Sarah's, uh, lived in our county for quite a while now, her role as the, uh, as the head of the chamber, brings it countywide for. I think it will give, uh, give us a good background to somebody that's kind of countywide in her role with the chamber and, uh, figure she would be a good person if, uh, you so choose to appoint for. And then for the hospital of, um, finance authority, that's one that Tracy Cordis, as the, uh, county administrator sits on. That's one that we are looking at, uh, probably going to wind down this right now, it's just on hold because we don't have a hospital anymore domiciled in the county. You know, we have Grash, my Michigan Medicals is affiliated Medlin. They're doing expansions and all of that, we in the past, when it was Grash Hospital, actually domiciled here and there was some financing done. We had this authority that's put together that allowed them to finance things at a better rate. Now that, that, uh, we don't have that, any financing that my Michigan would do, would be coming through, uh, their headquarters. But, uh, we, we still have the authority in place, so, we need to make sure we have the proper people on.
How often do you meet for the hospital?
Uh, Jan, normally maybe once a year, whenever we've had to tie it back. Similar positions with a little bit of change, I believe the differences are on the hospital authority, Tracy's on, I believe I'm on it. Are the two differences, but we can't be on the EDC, but we can be on hospital authority, so it, it meets very infrequently, just as an update of minutes. And with the statuses of it, again, we're gonna look into what it takes to actually shut it down, but sometimes it shuts on downs, a lot more work than just kind of putting it on idle. So we'll, uh, see where we're at with that as we go forward, but the Brownfield and EDC are very active. So we'll see where we're at with that as we go forward. But the Brownfield and EDC are very active, especially Brownfield Authority.
We need a motion to accept these positions.
Motion by Commissioner Lemberman. We have a second, second by Commissioner Bunting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Thanks much. Take the run, but we've, in case, I mean, we've got to go to, so appreciate that.
All right, Chris, you're handling a postage meter lease. Is that what I see here?
Yes. So Grashut County has a postage machine that we keep down in near the equalization wing. Well, it might sound weird to you that someone would have a postage machine. It sounded weird to me when I first came here, too. But it's one of those administrative features that is really beneficial. And one of the reasons that we do have a postage machine is because in the past year, we've stuffed forty two thousand envelopes, over forty two thousand envelopes. So what this machine does is we place the checks in there, we place the, anything that is being mailed out to a resident in the letter. The letter runs through the machine, it seals it, it also puts a stamp on it. It prints a stamp, but doesn't put an actual stamp on it. One of the benefits of this is that we do get a discount on stamps because we, the USPS is not producing the stamps. We get a three or three cent discount. Over the last year, that discount has saved us about twelve hundred and sixty two dollars. The lease that we have on our current machine is up. It was five year lease. It was with a company called Quodians. It frequently jams. It does not have the option of weighing the letter as it goes through, which automatically adjusts the postage that is printed on it. I'll revisit that in a second. And they do not come to fix the machine when it breaks. Fortunately and unfortunately, Becky Clark, the finance officer, she is typically on the phone with them and they give her instructions how to fix the stamp machine, how to fix the postage machine. So we think that if we also add the feature that would weigh on the way, which would means weigh the envelope as it goes through the machine to adjust the postage, that we will get additional departments that would use this machine, which would make it more worthwhile. And I think we could, we can convince some of the courts to start using that and we can get it up to fifty to fifty five thousand envelopes through that a year. So we put out an RFP. We did not get any responses except for our current vendor. So we, we then decided that we would directly solicit some bids from some companies. Our, our current contract is just over two hundred dollars a month. The bids that we got back were north of six hundred dollars a month. So we were not, we were not satisfied with the numbers that we were getting, with the offers that we were getting. So we started calling other counties and finding out who they use so that we could directly solicit a bid from somebody who has a machine that sounds more reasonably priced. And what we found was Pitney Bowes has a machine that has the features that we are interested in. We found that they have very good references. I'm on site times a year for maintenance, whether you need it or not, because these machines do need to be cleaned in order to be functioning properly. I did not include every bid that we had on here because some of them were up to eight hundred, one thousand dollars a month. And I didn't want you to consider that, but I did put the two lowest. The Quodian, which would be essentially the same machine that we have now, six hundred and ten dollars a month for a sixty month lease than the Pitney Bowes at two hundred and sixty two dollars a month for a sixty month lease. And I did attach the Pitney Bowes contract in this memo. What I'm asking for is approval for the county to move forward with the Pitney Bowes machine. This is, also goes, they also have a contract with the state of Michigan, Michigan, that allows local municipalities to get a bargain deal through the state. That contract with the state is up at the end of this month, so more than likely prices will go up significantly if we don't enter into a contract with Pitney Bowes this month.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lemberman. I had one question. What happens after the sixty months?
We would have to solicit again.
We're just renting it, you know, right?
Correct. I'd also like to say that we've had success with partnering with local townships also. They have come in and they've used our postage machine when they have thousands of tax bills that they send out every year. So the machine is able to track that and we're able to build a township to reimburse us for the cost of that.
I know Pine River is real happy with that arrangement. All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Thank you.
AC, you've got basement issue.
I got the next three items. We'll start with the courthouse basement. Kalen placed a memo in the board packet that goes over the, the basic information. But what we'd like to, this started with a sewer pipe leak down in the basement, happened to be situated right over some court files, you know, why not? But we got the, the pipe fixed. About the same time, some folks in the district court, staff in district court were expressing concern about, they felt sure that there was mold present and then unacceptably high levels that was impacting their health. So of course, we tested for mold in the file room, up in the district court offices. And I'm relieved to say that there was not mold at beyond acceptable levels that could have been resulting in any impact on their health. However, you know, there's carpeting down in that file room. And it's old and dusty and, you know, carpet in basement areas collects, collects moisture. And when you get a pipe that leaks every now and then, so just, I am concerned that there will be mold that will develop there and want to get ahead of that. We also have paneling on the walls in that file room, you know, circa nineteen seventy something or other. Some of it is actually pulling away from the wall though, so it's causing some of the shelving to sag, so we kind of got the room falling in on itself. So some of this would also need to be moved and removed. So because of the, this should be done by professionals, we, that have all the appropriate protective equipment, including breathing protection and also those that have the technology, the equipment to process the air as you're pulling up all that carpeting with dust in it, perhaps mold spores and others. So this would be the first leg of a project down there. We want to, at some point, get a filing system. You know, shelves that, anyway, a space saving shelving system for the ever growing number of files coming out of district court, circuit court, prosecutor's office, and then some documents that are held down there by some other entities, register of deeds, for example. So Kalen went to work on finding us a vendor to do this kind of work because, again, I didn't want our buildings and Browns folks to be doing this without the proper protection. She was only able to come up with one vendor, that's Brad's Cleaners, based in Greenville. And I'm seeking your approval of this vendor for work at the cost of ten thousand eight hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Any questions?
I move who is Brad's cleaners.
Motion by Commissioner Lemberman. We have a second.
Or?
Support by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Very much. I can go right into, I can, no, I won't say that. I can go right into snow plowing.
Sounds good.
Good. Okay, I'm asking.
Especially with the snow flying the last couple.
I hear about it, but in spite of my denial about where we're going with this season, I'm asking that lawn scape be selected again this year to do the snow plowing of the numerous areas for which we are responsible. Like everything else, again, Kalen has placed a memo in your board packet. Like everything else, costs have gone up. There's a table in her memo that shows you the new costs and the costs last year. The cost is done, not, you know, a contract year, but it's per plow, per lot. And that formatting is no different this year than in the past. So I'm asking you to approve and for the chair to sign the contract with lawn scape or our snow plow.
So moving.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lemberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
I'd like to close out those two topics by telling you that the person that did this work, that did these procurements, Kalen Lombard, is her last day of employment with Grashut County is tomorrow. This is a huge loss for us. Kalen started, I don't know how long ago. And I came to this board and reported that in the first month, she had pretty much paid her salary for the entire year in her review of contracts and other work that were cost savings, cost saving. We knew we needed someone in that, doing that body of work. And she has just been such an asset. So talented is she that her job grew over time. She was to first be procurement, contract management, and property disposal or property management. And in time, we needed someone to help out with doing the finances at Commission on Aging. And there Kalen was, a huge talent, had interest and willingness. I don't think he had to pull her arm too hard behind her back, but Kalen picked up that kind of work also, particularly the grants management over there. So we have the position posted, but on voyage to Kalen. And we're cursing Central Michigan University a little bit, but our loss is, is their gain. And again, I think we could feel very, very proud when we have such talented people go to other employees and they know that they came from Grashut County. So that is the update on staff. I can talk about the amended blight agreements then, if you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay. Deandra Messer at Department of Community Development is, is helping me to get us caught up on our various agreements and agreement amendments with the townships that are participating in year two of our blight eradication program. You've seen one of these before. What we're simply needing to do is to get our intergovernmental agreement with two more entities updated so that blight complaints can be filed by township supervisors as well as community members. You have two identical documents in front of you, one for, I believe it's Fulton and North Star. I'm asking your approval of and the chair's signature on both amen, IGA amendments.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lemberman. Any discussion?
Fulton did approve theirs last night before the supervisor.
Q.
I think he's going to cite it, the last act.
Last great act.
Anything else? Motion on the floor on that. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
That's me. Thank you very much.
So who's going to handle item nine?
I believe in the memo that the administrator asked that the discussion be held amongst the commissioners while she was not present. Contract iteration.
If you like, Chuck, I'll just read the memo out loud.
Aye.
October thirteenth, twenty twenty two, to Board of Commissioners from Tracy Cordis, renew contract year salary consideration. On November first, I will begin the second year of my three year contract with Grashut County. The board approved this agreement by a vote of four oh on October nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Commissioner Lemberman was absent. For your convenience, the contract is attached. On paragraph eight C of the contract on page five provides as follows. The board may further increase the salary and or other benefits of the employee in such amounts and to the extent as the board in its sole discretion may desire during the term of the agreement or during any extension of the agreement by a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. This consideration of salary has historically occurred prior to the end of a contract year to take effect at the beginning of a new contract year. I offer these facts to aid you in your consideration this year. To bearable counties, we use Mount Tom, Sanalac, Hillsdale, Newago, Branch and Macosta counties as comparison for numerous projects as they're most similar in population and tax revenue. Of these, I was unable to get administrator compensation information from Branch. They wanted me to file a FOIA or Sanalac, no answer at extensions of the administrator, finance director or HR. I gathered the following information from the other counties. Mount Tom, current salary, one fourteen, three fifty five as of January one, one eighteen, nine twenty nine, and they have an accountant. Newago, one sixteen, eight ninety six. They have a finance director as well. Macosta, current ninety eight, nine as of January first, one oh four, eight thirty four. They also have a finance officer, deputy controller at eighty two, oh sixty five. Posted at home, our court administrator is compensated at the rate of a hundred and three thousand nine sixty nine plus a fifteen hundred and sixty dollar, one point four percent cash payment. Notley scale. The county and court administrator positions were included in the twenty nineteen study by Mark Notley. These numbers have been increased by an exceedingly modest rate of one percent in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, so that as of October first, twenty twenty one, the rate of compensation at the grade and step that reflects my position is a hundred and one thousand, one fifty. The board has recently approved compensation increases for unions and all other employees of four percent and four and a half percent for most elected officials. Applying this arithmetic to my current salary, it would take her at four percent from ninety three, five to ninety seven, two forty. At four and a half percent, it would take her from ninety three, five to ninety seven, seven oh eight. C, additional compensation. My contract currently includes a provision whereby an additional five thousand is contributed to my retirement fund of my choice. I have historically included that in view of my compensation. For example, I consider my current compensation to be ninety three, five plus five equals ninety eight, five. The four percent and four and a half percent calculations above do not include the additional retirement contributions. So are an accurate reflection of salary only when increased by those percentages. I do not intend to be present for the compensation, for the discussion of this agenda item. I will leave it to you to do a reasonable business calculation and to do what you think is fair. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Grashut County.
But what did the union contract, was that four or wasn't it four and a half?
Right, like four, two, four and a half. It's.
In the middle?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the way I feel about it is I think that she has a very good contract already. She gets six weeks off for vacation plus holidays. So is it six weeks or is it eight weeks? I think it's six weeks. And I got to tell you, I think we should pick three months out of the year, we do all the raises and not do this every month.
and not do this every month, every month, every month, every month. Because by the time you get to nine months into the year, you realize that somebody is making more money than somebody else that should be getting more money than that person. And so it's just, it seems like a mess continuously. In the past, it was always three months that we took and gave raises. We talked about the raises and gave the raises. It was done. There was no more raises the rest of the year. And that's what I'd like to see done here. It should be June, July, and August, or whatever. I don't care what months they are. But this given raises and going through this, and another thing too. What you, you might check on what other people are getting today, but I can assure you a month from now, they might be getting something else again for more money. And also, it depends too on what your budget is. What is their budgets? Is it as much as ours or lower or higher, or what is it? And I gotta tell you this too, that has been announced already nationally that after the first year, Amazon, Apple, all of them are doing a massive layoff. There's gonna be a lot of people out there looking for jobs for a lot less money.
But by the same token, social security is doing massive increase.
Well, yeah.
Because of inflation.
I heard it was a hundred and thirty dollars more a month.
Eight percent?
Eight percent.
Eight percent?
Eight, eight percent, whatever you get.
Right.
Oh, eight percent.
Increasing the Medicare premium and all that's what I-
They, everything goes up, so you're really not ending up with anything extra.
So.
I'd like to make a motion that we give her the four and a half percent pay raise that takes her base salary from ninety-three, five to ninety-seven, seven oh eight. I feel that when you throw in that extra five thousand dollars that she does to her retirement fund of choice, that gets her right there, close to the court administrator and gets you right close to that Nazi scale.
How much more does she make than the sheriff?
I don't know. It's probably on this other piece of paper.
The sheriff is like, the eight, something.
It's what?
Well, I think he's at seventy something. Then we just get seventy.
It's mid eighties. There's a, there could be a budget book right behind the chairman if he wants to know in exact.
Well, if our administrator would like to be on call seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, that's a little different. I feel very bad about the sheriff, and I know that he is out late at night. There's a lot of stuff going on, I know, right in St. Louis. Read my budget book.
Here's this one sent here. So. You know, I just, man, son.
I'm scared for her jobs, like, it's like with him. Like, there's no comparison. I mean, I don't hate to compare, like, compare to the low of the starting person who works in the clerk's office. I don't know what they would make, you know, why, why do you expect the sheriff?
It's on page twenty-two, Jan. The sheriff makes eighty-six, eight fifteen.
He's eighty-six, twenty, twenty-two, okay, I'm looking for it.
The sheriff makes eighty-six, eight fifteen.
Eighty-six, yeah. Well, I'm just saying that the sheriff works, he's called out, I'm sure, day and night, seven days a week. We're giving him eighty-six thousand. And I don't know, what's he get, a couple of weeks, three weeks vacation? Two weeks vacation plus the holiday?
I second that.
So we have a motion on the floor, Commissioner Lemberman, second by Commissioner Smith.
Can I read the motion? To approve four percent increase on the base salary.
I said four, five.
I didn't hear that right. And it's just on the base salary, on the retirement, but we're going up to the ninety-seven, seven oh eight.
Yep, that's what I heard.
To your point, Jan, I just don't think you can compare the administrator job and the sheriff job.
No, but again.
Two totally different jobs.
I know, but the sheriff is making a whole lot less. Makes the least amount of money.
I'm sorry, do you have another question?
October first.
I told you, November first. Her contract year runs November first.
And I'd like, or I mean, oh, yes, we will.
Yeah, that'll be fine, you know. You said the union was getting four point two four five?
I, I said four. Two, four point five.
Okay, all right, and I misunderstood you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Go ahead.
Bailey is absent. Bunting. Lumberman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes, since it's the, what we're giving the others. Okay, motion passed. All right, next, okay, we're, any unfinished business? Then we're looking for a motion to recess the regular meeting and enter into the finance meetings.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Lemberman, we have a second. Support by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? It's yours, Jan.
All right, thank you, sir.
So I just make a statement. I don't have my iPad here. I'm not like looking at stuff on my phone. I'm reading immediately. So anybody out there, it's, he just looked at his phone online.
Sure.
I am, I am looking at the agenda.
Sure you are.
Angie, you can read me a computer, but I think you're wrong.
I just got pages of paper here, so. Does anybody need to take five, take a break? Anybody else?
I would like to take a break.
Okay. It can be talked into it then.
Yes, I'm, sir.
Fight with the infant.
Oh, man.
Jeez, it's free here.
Throw that guy out, somebody else grabs it. Are we doing, young man?
So if they don't replace, the board has to approve this. And if they don't replace him in thirty days, I have to call a special election, so they will probably have an option.
I, you know, it'll be interesting.
Find somebody?
No, I think it's that, that, the fever guy, wanted the job before. And it's took it. So that the fever guy is the guy with the wood.
You, Sam and Angie, if you guys wanted to mute your mic during the break, there's a mute, there you go.
Act two, order, and Mr. Oosterhoff, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, first up is, well, first I want to say that my treasurer, Terry, was unable to make it to the meeting tonight. She did contact myself and the clerk and the administrator. She informed me that nothing was out of the ordinary in any of her presentations. So if you have any questions on anything, we would be happy to bring it back to her and distribute that information in a manner that is legal with the Open Meetings Act. As far as the finance directors' report, drain payments for the entire fiscal year ended at two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-four, fifty-four cents. We did budget drain free payments in the upcoming year. But as most of you are aware, interest rates have been climbing significantly lately and so we will have to, before we make any drain payments, we'll consult with our investment firm that we are getting closer and closer to pinning down whether it would be better to pay off a prepaid bond at four percent or to invest hopefully a higher percent, which would be a great, a great change. So I look forward to that analysis, and in fact, having that analysis done for me.
It's just a mad rule of thumb, and it seems like I heard this somewhere. We can't get two points, it's not worth doing it. Is that kind of a rule of thumb, John? If you can get two points on an investment or a payoff, isn't it, it's not worth doing it, like, you're gonna remortgage your house?
Oh, to refinance, yeah, because of the closing costs.
It's the same way here, you're thinking about.
It depends on the amount, so, but with, I, I don't think there's any cost to, to us.
Prepaid?
Prepaid. Where with a mortgage, you got those closing costs.
We would just really lose the, we would just really lose the cash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it would be real straightforward, I, I believe.
Real cut and dry, I think they're paying us five in the bank and we got a four percent bond.
That's the easiest.
Yeah, easy number, yeah, okay.
As far as ARP funds and project list update, there is no update from the previous month. Other than just today, I received a payment request from the Fulton Township. Unfortunately, like you mentioned, they have, they are going through a lot of turnover and they have not yet returned a signed contract that I'm aware of. Of course, things could get lost. I had a lot of contracts coming in and out. But they are one of the few ARP recipients that I do not have a signed contract with, so I need to wait for them to get their paperwork in order before I can make a distribution to them.
You know, they, they said they closed the week or so ago on this property. The chairman went, I mean, how would you close if you didn't trade dollars?
They have. They, I, I think they had four different projects that we, that you had approved.
Yeah, but this was that property deal, it was like seventeen or eighteen acres.
Done the BSNA, a significant portion of the BSNA. They've done another project and the land project. So there is a, I think there's about seventy-five thousand of the one hundred and forty they've already spent. They've sent the money out of their own bank.
Oh, so you're the first one. Okay, okay. So I think he said he closed last week. He went through a closing in St. John.
We do offer to pay out to our, our local recipients immediately if they are unable to pay, to help them out that way. But Fulton did not take advantage of this for us. So one of the things that we can discuss now or in the, in the future, it should be a topic probably with this current board that set up the rules for, for the ARP. What are we gonna do with the interest that we're generating on the ARP funds right now?
Keep it.
We're a little short on that, and I mean, that's Sam's opinion, yeah. You need a motion?
No. Answer the general fund.
I, I think that's what we ought to do.
I have been in contact with our audit firm, Yonio. The financial audit will begin with auditors on site the week of December twelfth. They're gonna come out one day for, to gather the preliminary information. They come out about a month before they start the audit and grab as much data as they can, and they take it back with them and they start analyzing offsite. So that's gonna start mid-December. And then they will return right after the holidays in January, January third, which will be, I believe, is a Tuesday to begin the onsite work, so. Never been audited before, I highly recommend it.
This is not our annual audit.
This is our annual financial audit.
You start then, or? It's just.
Well, it's not early, it's actually late because our fiscal year just ended September thirtieth. So they give us, they essentially give us three months to get our books in order, and then they come in and look.
They're auditing the last year.
Year that just ended September thirtieth.
Okay, so you have three months to straighten up and make our adjustments or whatever.
No. By law, we are allowed to keep our books open for six months past the fiscal year. The first three months the auditors give to us, the last three months, essentially the books are theirs to, to look through and give recommendations, find errors, et cetera. Apologize for this, first balance, the picture didn't pop up. Both, I'm gonna reopen it, I'm just gonna give you the statistics. Our OPEB is down sixteen point three percent on the calendar year as compared to the S and P, down twenty-six point three percent. As of Thursday, when I put this together, Commissioner Lemberman, as you know, the markets right now are extremely volatile. It may have moved three or four percent.
I think, I think the last report you gave- I think the last report you gave, the S and P was beating MERS just slightly. And now you see it's swung ten percent the other way. So the MERS is more conservative. Um, I, just since you got the MERS up or the, the OPEB up, do we, do we make an additional contribution to the OPEB every year?
We have not done that in the last two years. The last two years, what we have done is we budgeted enough money to continue paying as we go. So we, in this last fiscal year, we budgeted three hundred thousand dollars to pay our OPEB expenditures. So we took that from our general fund instead of taking it from our OPEB. So we have in touch with our nest egg.
Okay.
Uh, so we're letting our, our nest egg sit and then our OPEB liability continues dwindling down on an annual basis due to our population aging out. Okay. So that, that is the approach that we have right now, but we do have another three hundred thousand dollars appropriated for our current fiscal year. And this three hundred thousand dollars could be sent to the OPEB fund to be invested at this. Would probably be shocked if you wouldn't be in favor of that seeing the S and P is down twenty-six point seven percent in this calendar year.
I, I, so I would be in favor of that. Would we? Is this the appropriate time to talk about that?
I would be happy to talk about that now.
I'm, I'm, I guess I'm glad we're talking about this now.
Can I do a real quick research?
Sure.
Last fiscal year, we had set some benchmarks. If the stock market dropped a certain percentage that we would take this money that we set aside to pay the OPEB expenditures and put it in the market for a couple of months, maybe six months, maybe eight months to have that appreciate or essentially take advantage of a market bounce back. But that never actually came to, because by the time we hit the mark that we had suggested, there was only a couple of months left in the fiscal year. And we didn't want to throw it into OPEB for two months and then pull it right back out in order to pay our expenditures. So now what I did is I just used that money that was appropriated last year to pay our OPEB expenditures for last year. We have appropriated another three hundred thousand dollars to pay our current fiscal years. But I don't need to make that payment until September of next year. So there is an opportunity for us to put this three hundred thousand dollars into MERS and have it invested for the next eleven months essentially. And then I'll let you.
Two things about that. October is usually a bottoming time for the market. And annually around Halloween time, you tend to enter what's known as the Santa Claus rally and the markets tend to rally going into the end of the year. And we're just now getting into the, the heart of earnings season for the S and P five hundred. This year, the big buyer of stocks has been companies themselves. And the companies themselves, it's about five billion dollars a day. When they can buy is what they're, what they're putting into the market. We're in a blackout period right now. It's going to start to lift around about October twenty-fifth. Again, close to that. Halloween period where since they're in the reporting season right now, they cannot buy back their own stock. But as we get into the end of the month, they're going to be able to go in there and buy back their own stock. The other thing is mid-terms, your market tends to bottom early, like a week before mid-terms. It's, it's just historically because however bad the election is, it's going to be over. And, and that, and we're going to be past that. So I, I think it would be wise to, and the, the other thing that makes me weirdly enough, if you have money in cash, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, if, if we have money in cash or we have money in the market, we're actually viewed as being more fully funded if we have money in the market because the market historically generates a seven percent return. Cash does not. Although interest rates are rising now. I, I think it would be wise to put at least half of that three hundred thousand in the market now.
And that's through mirrors, their operation.
Yeah.
And are they still giving the projection of a seven percent gain? Is that the figures they're using?
I believe they do.
I don't have access to the numbers that the actuaries would use.
It's usually like at the bottom assumption, seven percent.
The expected rate of return, I believe, is seven percent. But they're, depending on where we are in the stock market, if we're at a high, they're going to discount the assets that we have. If we're at a low, they're going to appreciate the assets that we have based on their market predictability tools. I don't one hundred percent understand how an actuary does it, but that is the best that I can explain to you at this time. So right now, because it's, it's down, if we were to put assets in there, they would view them more favorably if they feel like the market is extremely high. So that would support.
And I, I don't know if we need a motion or anything, but I, I would say that whenever it's a tough situation, I always say, let's do half. Cause then you can only be half wrong. You still got the other hundred fifty in cash. If interest rates keep climbing, we can, you know, gain some appreciation on that, on that half. But that's just my opinion.
I think you're catching the market alone. I think there's opportunity, a lot of opportunities to grow up. You know, I mean, personally banking on some of that, you know, I just think you buy this election and you get to the end of the year, I think it's going to go up. These mirrors, they don't have a recommendation. It's just how we want to move it around. Yeah, I remember saying that. What do they have is for cash? You know what the rate is for getting their cash to invest?
You hold the cash yourself, don't you, Chris?
We hold the cash and, no, let's not say that.
Why?
Yeah.
We, we hold the cash ourselves in a fund, okay. So what is our payment? What is our payment, our, uh, payment that we make it to them, you know, out of the three hundred, we're all the three hundred, are we paying them three hundred?
I haven't made last year's payment yet, but it's usually around, around two seventy, two eighty a year and I budget three hundred.
Yeah, I guess that would be against the law.
Are you supporting one hundred and fifty?
Think you probably need to make that motion in.
Outside.
Session.
And I will go through and tomorrow morning I'll research exactly what needs to be done in case something else would need to be done. That brings us right into our cash balances if ready to move forward. Was a little perturbed with our cash balance and general fund for September. Uh, as you see historically, our general fund from year over year increases. Uh, that's because, I mean, when our, our, our general fund cash balance increases, that means that we have a surplus. Um, and finance directors like surpluses. So from September of twenty twenty-one, we're sitting at eight point seven. September twenty twenty-two, we're sitting at seven point six. So I started doing some digging today. And for whatever reason, we had tax money that just hit the bank later than we did last year. I looked at the cash balances today, you know, we're looking at halfway through October. And we are, today our general fund is sitting at nine point two million dollars. So that's one point five million more than what I captured when I ran this report for the end of September. I looked at October eighteenth for twenty twenty-one, one year ago, so we could compare that year over year. And in twenty twenty-one, they're sitting at eight point two million dollars. So there was just a timing difference of when tax money came in from the cities and townships, got into the treasurer's office and then made it into our bank account. So we are seeing trends of a surplus again for this last fiscal year. And reading the tea leaves, I would say that we are going to be all, almost exactly where we budgeted, which is about three hundred thousand dollars surplus, so.
What you're saying as far as the timing of the tax money is exactly the same thing that the Arcady Township treasurer set.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's still strong receipts still coming in. Like, uh, this was last Wednesday and it's like not what they expected at the end of September, but the money is still coming in.
Right. So it sounds like then the tax payments are a little late. They're not delinquent, but they're just a little bit.
And, and I think a year ago, I remember we made comment about how people are paying their taxes really quick.
Yes.
We had that comment in there that I'm the last guy payer, but I'm the last to care. A lot of people were paying really fast.
But we were getting six, seven, eight thousand dollar stimulus checks right at that time.
Oh, I see.
Oh, yeah. So people had the cash in hand to pay their, pay their taxes last year.
We're probably back to some normal type of payment plan right now or before last year.
Well, slightly.
Yes.
So, uh, yeah, as far as our other funds, they're, they're falling right in line where, uh, I would, I would hope that they would be where I would expect them to be. Um, so I would see, I expect to see when October twenty twenty-two cash balance for general fund is posted, that we're going to see that increase just a month later than we did in the prior year. The next item that is in the finance report is the check register and I will give you a moment to review that and ask any questions.
Yeah, I do have some questions. Just a minute, I gotta find it. The right, it says right-of-way management for twenty-five thousand.
What date would that be?
The date would be nine sixteen of twenty-two.
That's for drain spraying, Jan.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yep, they sprayed the Bush Creek, which goes from Ithaca all the way up to the county, into the next county.
Okay, thank you, right, or. How about forty-four North for twenty thousand?
Forty-four North is our insurance agent, essentially.
Okay. And then RL. Capital R, capital L, that's LAU. God, I can't see that. R E N, huh?
Incorporated.
Yeah, sixty-one thousand.
I'm going to have to look that one up. That is something that we get billed on a regular basis, so I do know that it is.
Okay, and then I guess the biggest one is Wamsey Tree Service for seventy-seven thousand.
Yep, that's going to be Mr. Burns also.
The drain out in Elm Hall, they put a new drain up through Elm Hall and that would be that one eighty-nine drain.
Okay.
And you're just seeing a lump sum payment. They did it all in one month.
Okay.
Thanks for staying on, Bernie.
Yeah, I, I, I'm here to help if you guys need me. Just holler at me, okay?
Government, I'm here to help.
That's, that can be scary.
Yeah, um, if you could just log in every time we have a finance meeting, that would be great.
Yeah.
You're kind of boring, Chris.
Thank you. Government, boring government finances, what everybody wants to be.
Keep it up. I'm gonna go over my hundred-page report, line item by line item. Uh, could we raise technical difficulties on that? RL Lorenz is our spray company also. I missed that when you guys said the name. RL Lorenz does a third of our spraying, so it's right-of-way management, RL Lorenz. And then, uh, trying to think of the other company, but what you're seeing is, is they wrapped up the year, so we got a lot of invoices all at once.
Yep. We do that with, with drains. They bring in all of their invoices at the end of the year. It's the same with the lawyers. You're going to see a lot of, especially in October where the lawyers will submit all their reimbursement requests.
I didn't, I don't think I ever saw the spraying though as high as seventy-seven thousand. That seemed really high.
Jan, we sprayed a hundred and fifty-four miles this year. Last year we sprayed a hundred and seventy-one. So probably it was larger. I'd have to look in my report to tell you the exact amounts. But I know last year we sprayed a hundred and seventy-one and this year's a hundred and fifty-four. But I think this year they all sprayed at once kinda and they all invoiced at once. So that's where you're seeing it rather than spread out over the whole summer months. Okay, Jan?
Yeah. So do, when you're spraying, you're spraying what? The fields or the ditches?
The ditches. We're trying to spray for brush. We can spray for approximately somewhere between twenty and forty cents per foot. And if we let it grow up, we're looking at ten dollars per foot. So it's, it's a major savings if we can control the brush with spray. And yes, it might be every four years, but we're still only talking twenty to forty cents a foot every four years versus if we.
Does the farmer's debt reimburse you for this?
Yes, the drainage district pay these costs. So everybody in the drainage district, if we spray the Bush Creek, everybody in that watershed shares this expense. This is part of maintenance.
So when, when do they send their check or how do they know how, you divide that up and then?
On your taxes.
Yeah. That's the report you approved tonight. That's our, you see that assessment that goes out to the townships. Then the township will put that on their winter tax bill. And th- these amounts look big, but when it divvies out, a lot of times it's, you know, small amounts per acre. Spraying is relatively cheap compared to a project. Like I say, if we had to go clear, we're talking like ten dollars a foot. So that's where this is a lot cheaper. If we can keep our drains brush free and have them be a grassed waterway, then we have other, it affects other things. We don't have erosion. And so because it's all grassed up, where if it's grown up with brush, there's no grass. So a big rain event will wash in the bank and then we got to dig the ditch more. So there's a whole maintenance program here that we get talking about, okay?
Okay, okay. Thanks, Bernie.
Hey Bernie, Bernie, a couple of quick questions for you.
Sure.
Do you still allow farmers to burn ditches? Do they just have to get a burning permit to burn ditches out?
Yes, I allow it. The problem what we run into is when we use plastic and the farmers also use plastic for their drainage. Um, I had a property owner down by the South County line that was burning corn stalks and it burned the basin, burned the pipe under the road and it turned into a twenty thousand dollar repair. So when there's plastic pipe involved, they got to be really careful.
Okay. The, the reason I'm asking this question is when the, the county was looking at becoming the airport authority, the airport has a lot of ditches that haven't ever been cleaned. And there's, there's county ditches at the airport that I believe you're taking care of, but there's other ditches that have never been cleaned. And I wondered if they could be burnt. And I wondered if they could be burnt. But you would you would do an assessment based on whether there's plastic uh drainage going into those ditches?
Correct. If the farmer's tiles and watch ninety nine percent of the farmer's outlets are plastic. Now, if you use like an S D R pipe, it has a higher flash point rather than an N twelve. But there's a lot of variables here and you'd have to inspect it good and most of the time the farmers have done it over the years, so they're familiar. So um, like I say, and you can still burn them, you just gotta protect the outlet. It's just that farmer didn't realize that underneath that two foot of corn fodder, there was a catch basin that was plastic underneath. And once that got going, it was like a inferno and it burned under the road, it burnt, you know, the whole region of pipe. And uh, it was just a bad deal. So, you know, we gotta really watch fire around plastic, even though it has a flash point is the same as asphalt road, they claim. I've never seen an asphalt road burn like that, but it's a variable because it's got the wind and it's so it's like a blast furnace down there when the wind's going through there.
Yeah.
That that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, thank you, appreciate.
Yep. If you guys ever have any questions, just give me a holler. I can answer these other than at a meeting too, okay?
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Any other questions from the check register?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the September uh revenue and expenditure. Report. Now, one thing that you need to know is that just because this is the September expenditure and revenue this is not going to be our final expenditure and revenues for the year. Uh, frequently, we, well, all the time, we had, we get bills after a fiscal year end. That is related to uh the prior fiscal year and we have to accrue those back. Um, uh, an example is wages. Uh, we get paid for two weeks out of the year. The fir- or two weeks at a time. The first our our last paycheck, half of it was part of last fiscal year and half of us part of this fiscal year. So I have to separate all of our wages out and move them from one year to another. We have to do the same thing with subscriptions. We have to do the same thing with uh if somebody were to submit a mileage request for meetings from last year, we would still pay you. Uh, but we would have to move that expenditure to last year and would not be reflected here. Um, and and again, uh up until the time that the auditors get a hold of our books, I've gotten bills in December before that I've had to accrue back. Unfortunately, it's kind of the beast of government. Things don't always happen in a timely basis that you would see in a in a for-profit sector that moves a lot faster. Uh, but when I looked at this, there were a few things that stick out. This does represent the budget amendments that you had approved uh two meetings ago. So I don't want to see any red when I'm looking at expenditures here. Uh, if I see red when I look at revenues, I like that. That means we brought in more revenue than what was budgeted, so it's kind of the opposite of what you would think for revenues. Um, so I see uh negative sixty eight thousand pops out right there, right away in the sheriff deputy's mileage. The sheriff and I are fully aware of that and we explained this in the two meetings ago. We have places that we can actually move those expenditures and other funds that they fit better, so that was planned. Um, so to leave that as an over expenditure, I'm still going to make adjustments to that fund. Um. So as I scroll down to the second page, there was one other one that caught my eye when I was reviewing this. Fund three, five, one, drain number seven debt fund. This fund actually closed out last year. Uh, anytime that we issue a bond um, drain commissioner included. We have to create a new fund that will collect the money that is going to make those bond payments. By law, we have to create a, so that's why we see drain debt funds. That's why we see a pension bond fund. We have to create those for every bond that we issue. Um, we made our last payment for the number seven debt fund. But we still went ninety six thousand dollars over budget. What that was is uh the the drain commissioner clearing out funds that were left over in that fund i- in moving them actually to a place where he can use that money uh for further maintenance uh in the future for that um drain number seven. Um, unfortunately, we, I didn't know that that was gonna happen. I didn't factor that in my head. So what I did is I called over there a couple of days ago and asked if we could move that money back in there on September thirtieth so that it shows that there was no over expenditure. And then on October first, the new fiscal year, move that money out of there. And then this fiscal year, we can budget for that and then we won't have any problems when the auditors look at our books for last year. So those are the type of things that I see when I look at uh reports like this. The fringe benefit fund, fund six, seven, eight, uh, that's in the whole four hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. There are a lot of things that need to be um moved around in that. Our O P E B expenditures are in there and those must be moved to the O P E B fund. That's gonna lower it three hundred thousand dollars. Um, we pay healthcare, workers' comp, all of the insurances one month ahead of time. Those expenditures need to be moved out of there into the future fiscal year. That fund will not be an issue. And and those were the items that I saw that I knew needed to be addressed looking at this report. If you have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, that would be the end of my report for the board for tonight. Any questions?
I just got a question about the investment guy. Is he on board yet or?
He's.
And it, he is on board?
He's not.
Oh, that that was gonna be my question for Terry too, is what's her timetable? I mean.
He sent a list.
Here, bless.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Give me the chat.
He sent the list of the questions or list of items that he needed from the treasurer. Uh, I don't know when he sent those to her, but I got a list of things yesterday. Um, a lot of the stuff that he needs is that I've I've actually presented to you tonight. But uh I expect to have all of my financial data to him this week. I don't know what the next step is. I don't. Yeah, um. Did the board approve going with meter investments?
I thought we did.
I think I thought you did.
I bet we did too. We saw that night. I mean, I'm from Iraq.
Okay.
I don't know if they selected him or how that worked, but what I thought he meant here, having somebody here the next day saying, here's what I need and kind of making appointment with you or Terry or whoever and and somebody here getting those numbers and.
That is something you're right, that is something that should be done as quick as possible because
This is opportunity.
We are, we are at the high for cash for the year.
Yeah.
Because we're bringing in our operating uh mileage currently.
I asked her at the last finance meeting and she gave me an answer and I can't remember what it is. Um, but she made it sound like there was a few steps that needed to be taken, but that's my question too, is how much longer?
My really question is, is he the right guy? I mean, like I say, if.
Yeah, it's been a little while.
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been at least a couple of months.
Yeah.
I had somebody here. I had said I want to send somebody in from my office and tell me you need to come. Must send Suzie here and she's gonna come for this information. We'll put a plan together like next week.
Right. I know we're not probably the biggest of fish, but we're still only a half hour away.
Still fishing, yeah.
That's right.
All right, I think that's that's all, then. Um, I need the motion.
Thank you.
Go back to regular session. I'll move. Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
Posed. Okay, we're back in regular session.
All righty, so I believe we need a motion to approve the financial report and then uh we get that done and then we need to talk about the one fifty K.
I move we accept the financial report and pay the bills?
Oh, it's, the bills are, we actually are paying the bills. We're approving the report.
Okay.
Of the bills being paid.
Okay.
Yep. Do we have a second on that?
Yep.
Second by motion by Commissioner Lemerman, second by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, I?
I.
I, posed nay, motion passed, then I believe we're talking about doing something on the O P E B.
On the O P E B, I move that of the three hundred thousand budgeted that we invest a hundred fifty thousand with MERS now and keep a hundred fifty in cash.
Motion by Commissioner Lemerman, we have a.
That's in the stock portfolio.
Yeah.
So you had three or four portfolios, didn't you? And MERS have three or four portfolios?
Um, we did when we first started off, but then we moved to put it in the exact same portfolio that our pension uh fund is in. So it is in that uh I think it was about eight months ago when MERS sent us a letter explaining how they moved to more of a bond and fixed asset instead of fixed equity when they felt like the market was high. Um, and our representative is anxious to come talk again, so maybe she can talk about if they are flipping uh their approach.
I believe it, they had a bunch of private equity in it, uh like farmland and timberland and things like that. Um, and I think that's why the performance has been better than the regular uh than a regular S and P five hundred fund, but I, there was some other we needed to make that move at the time for some reason. And I can't remember what the reason was, like it's some date. It seems like we're up against the date or something.
Yeah, they were eliminating some of the fixed asset or stable funds that we had.
We had certainly.
So that's that's. And so now we are in their their actively trading fund where they manage it daily based on economic conditions.
I think, and we were reduced to only that choice, I believe.
We could move it into other ones. But at the time, we felt that this would probably be our best bet after she came and talked to us about how they managed it.
Okay. At any rate, my motion is for the existing fund that we're in to put a hundred fifty in the existing fund that we're.
That's.
My mind.
Acceptable for the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, I?
I.
I, posed nay, motion passed. So we are up to additional public comment. Uh, anyone online? I see I'm no one here. I'm assuming wants to make comment. Uh, anyone online? Vev, let's see you unmute.
Yes, Chuck, can you hear me?
Uh, very faintly.
How about now?
Oh, they're working on it. Okay, try now.
Can you hear me?
Now, can you add the volume at your end? Just went all the way we could at our end.
I added volume on my end. You still can't hear me?
Speak loud.
Uh, can you hear me now?
There, there we go now. I can hear you now.
Okay, so I want to say just a couple of things. First of all, Jan, I completely agree with you on the wage increase. Um, the sheriff is an elected position protecting the citizens of Greshit County. And therefore I do think that he should not be making less than the county administrator. So thank you for bringing up that very valid point. Again, he was an elected official versus a hired position. Should not be that high, so thank you for that. Second thing, last night, we had uh Shane Hernandez, Lieutenant Governor, coming to Greshit County of all places. We have not had the opportunity of bringing Tudor Dixon. But I would like to, in the future, invite all elected county commissioners to all events that we have regarding all elected officials. I think it's very important for all elected candidates that work for we the people to be present when we're all working together to save this very nation we are living in and in jeopardy of losing. It was very disheartening to not see our elected county commissioners. We had two there, obviously Chuck because he's the chair of the Republican Party. Jan was there and then we had a candidate that's running for county commissioner present in that meeting last night. So it was very impressive to see two of our current county commissioners there and one candidate there. So I wanted to do a public thank you to those who attended to meet Shane Hernandez and two candidates for the Michigan Department Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva, and also that was uh Tim Gay that was there last night. He's here tonight also with Dave Owens um at the county commission board. But thank you for your comment.
All righty, anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Hey Chuck, if I could just speak real quick, I would have been there last night. However, most of you know I had knee replacement ten days ago. And uh I gotta ice and elevate every twenty minutes and I didn't think I was gonna be able to do that last night, so.
Yes, and and I did know about that and uh I I'm sure you would have enjoyed the event. Why did the recording stop?
I don't know. I think I misclicked a button, but it's not.
Okay, I'm seeing, yeah, we're still got the light on here. Okay, we're good.
Um, but I did, I did see another uh text comment come through and I can read that out if you want me to, or I I think it's up on the screen right now.
It's not anymore, Matt, but I saw it too, but it, do you have it so that you could read it?
Yep, I can read it. So this is from a Bonnie. She doesn't list her last name, but it says, I support Jan's recommendation to review wages and make recommendations during the two or three month period.
All right.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
I think we're trying to do that ourselves. They just keep coming up all the time.
All right, anyone else wish to address the commission?
I would like to say something. I was promoted at work today and I have a whistle.
Oh, dear. And I was serving the kids and he scared the pants off me almost. Blowing this whistle, it echoed.
I said, when they gave this to me, boy, they gave it to the right person. I blew that thing. Everybody jumped. It was inside, but the kids were too loud and I had to tell them to be quiet. But anyway, that's what I'm wearing now. It's my new promotional.
Now, again, another time when you were in there, that's the first time ever the kids were completely silent during uh lunch. And the technique she used was that, okay, if anybody talked, they had to go to the end of the food line.
It works.
It worked. And it was gonna be a fun game. She introduced this thing. Okay. All right, uh.
Without objection, I believe we've uh exhausted our agendas and without objection, we're adjourned.
Did I blow the whistle?